Hello and good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the zoning board of appeals hearing for today, Thursday, August eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. My name is Bob Green. I'm the chair of the zoning board of appeals. I'm also joined by our fellow board members, Michelle Bodie and Brendan Riley. We have on the agenda tonight four matters, one of which is a carryover and has been deemed status only, but we do have matters that were put over to tonight's usual meeting. And I'd like to begin with the agenda as set. So our first matter before the board is on behalf of three snowcrest run. And the hearing notice as read, a virtual public hearing will be held on Thursday, August eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, on the petition of Laura Bowers, three snowcrest run north reading, Massachusetts map seventy-four parcel ninety-six, for a special permit to raise chickens. Good evening, Ms. Bowers. Are you with us?
I am, yes. Thank you.
Great, thank you. If you might take a moment and let the board and all, anybody joining us, let's, if you could let us in on your request for the permit.
Yeah, so for many years, we've thought, my children and I have thought about raising chickens. I'm a science teacher here in town with an animal behavior major from my BA. So I've always been interested in raising animals. And my youngest is twenty and she's a captive wildlife care major at the university or Unity Environmental University. And so she would like to do this. We've measured out the distance from our neighbors right next to us, and I think the closest neighbor's dwelling is two hundred feet away and the others are two hundred and fifty feet away. And something similar to that on the other side. It would be very small coop, no bigger than probably four feet by four feet. And with then a run, which would be like humane to make sure they have a place to run outside the coop. But it would be very small, four chickens, no roosters. And probably no one would even know it was happening.
Always a good, always good to be noted on behalf of the neighbors for that purpose. So respectfully, by the way, Kathy, were notices timely sent and for purposes of Butters and other interested immediate parties?
Yes, they were sent out.
Okay, thank you. I always ask if you've had any conversations with the neighbors, anybody who applies for chicken, for a permit, if you've had any conversations with your neighbors about the plan.
I have not. I don't, I don't usually, my neighbors are kind of far away from me spatially, like the houses, so I haven't really had the opportunity to discuss with them what we were thinking of.
You're, that's not an obligation, but I just always ask, especially with smaller properties, which doesn't seem to be the case here. You've really located it well off the minimum requirements. What will the, can you describe the coop you plan on constructing for the for the chickens?
Yeah, we are, we're do it yourselfers. I built the house myself with my ex-husband and father, so we'll probably work on, my daughter and I will work on constructing it together. I found something I don't know if you'd be able to see this, but just a very small coop type thing for four chickens. It doesn't need to be that big. And yeah, so it would be something along those lines. We would work on designing it together as like a project.
Okay, great. And just my final question, with your background in animal science, have you, did you ever raise chickens before? I just find this interesting. Usually people come to us without your kind of a a CV of sorts, but I'm just wondering.
I have not raised chickens. If I'm being completely honest, in our family, we've had a few untimely deaths. And so we've thought, you know, what would, it's, it just makes you rethink what you want to get done in your life and what you've always dreamed of doing. And this is on my bucket list to do. My daughter has a couple of friends who raise chickens, so she's learned a lot about it through them. And I'm actually taking one of those free online courses through Corsair, Corsair on, you know, raising chickens and how to make sure you're caring for them humanely and appropriately.
Okay, great. Members, any, any questions? Michelle, Brendan, in particular.
No, I, I think it's pretty straightforward and, you know, from the aerial view and Google Maps, I agree with you, you're pretty far. And there seems to be a lot of vegetation between you and the neighbors and you're not too close to houses. So, yeah, I have no questions.
And Brendan?
I have no questions.
So last question, and I always ask this because I'm always curious, the number that you've chosen for, is there any possibility that you would want to add more? Because what the permit would allow, if granted, would be the maximum amount, you can always go minimum. But I'm just wondering if four was just, that's it, and you, your plan is that and nothing more?
We, we just chose four because there's four of us and we each have a chicken.
There you go. Lovely.
Sometimes when you buy them, and I don't know if you've looked into buying them, you have to buy like six. If you go to the place in Topsfield, I know that's what they say.
They have a minimum of six you have to buy?
Oh, so you can look into it though. I don't know.
I didn't know that.
Again, you could, you, I don't think the board, I mean, you could ask to just amend your request to make it no more than six and I, I have no problem with that. I don't think the board would either for the grant, but I just don't want to find you put in a position where you might have to come back for such a simple and common sense.
I really, really appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you for the information. I appreciate that as well.
Our, our, our town people are very experienced, if not most helpful and almost all in every matter that I've come to deal with. So thank you, Kathy. Is there anybody from the neighborhood or from the general public that has any questions for Ms. Bowers? Okay, hearing now. I have nothing further to inquire. If anybody on the board feels the same, does anybody want to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm Michelle Bodie and move to close the public hearing.
Can I get a second?
I, Brendan Riley, second.
All in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Michelle Bodie and aye.
Brendan Riley, aye.
Bob Green, aye. Board, since it became clear from the conversation, I don't think, I think everything that I wanted to ask was heard in the public hearing. I have no problem with going forward to vote on this if either of you feel the same, if somebody wants to bring a motion regarding the permit request. I'd like to close the board hearing and go right to that motion.
Yeah, I can bring the motion. I moved to grant a special permit for up to six chickens. The chicken coop cannot be any closer than ten feet on the rear side.
Excuse me, hello?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, we had, we had a little bit of an experience with little bit of an experience with the Zoom system. I'm sorry.
That's fine.
This is Tom Driscoll.
Okay, are you, Mr. Driscoll, good evening. Chair Bob Green here. We're in discussion regarding a request for to construct the chicken coop and have chickens at three snowcrest run in North Reading. Is that what you're interested in?
Yes.
Please.
And it, yes, and we've been privy to the, to the conversation thus far. Didn't realize that we were muted. We have some concerns. We are across the street from three snowcrest run. I'm at two snowcrest run. And when we bought this house in nineteen ninety-seven, there were restrictive covenants applicable to this development, including Snowcrest Run and Shasta Drive. And one of the first in the list of restrictive conditions was no poultry houses. And now I will grant that the provisions of those restrictive covenants expired in nineteen, in two thousand and seventeen. But the specific purpose of those covenants was to maintain a certain area, a certain aura or quality to this neighborhood. And again, poultry houses were specifically chosen literally as among the first in those restrictive covenants is something to be prohibited. If Ms. Bowers wants to have four, six chickens, doesn't seem like a big deal. If the people next door on the other side of us want to have four to six chickens, then all of a sudden, it's a very different thing. And so from my perspective, there's a certain certain conditions to this neighborhood, and I don't think that they're consistent with that.
Okay, if you might indulge me, what is the name of the the controlling party that has enacted the covenants that you're referencing?
When, when this development was done by Caruso builders, the restrictive covenants were put into place in nineteen eighty-seven. And again, those, those covenants technically were, were set to sunset in thirty years from when they were filed, which was nineteen eighty-seven. So technically they sunset in two thousand and seventeen. But I don't think that changes the neighborhood or what was certainly what we expected when we bought into the neighborhood, subject to those conditions that we had to follow. Among others. And so that's, that's the source. It was Caruso builders.
Okay, so actually, I see we're joined by town inspector Jerry. Good evening. Curious if you've ever had any situation like this in the past, because I, this is the first time that this kind of a point of interest was made during my time with the board.
I have not had this issue such as this. You'll probably have to get a hold of the town planner and see if that covenant is recorded.
Okay.
It's expired now. It also says people can't park in their driveways and they have to get their house color approved by Lenny and all of that, but it's expired now.
Yeah, a lot of those covenants usually go between five and ten years. When was this done? Night, was it, was it in two thousands? I only caught part of it.
It was in nineteen eighty-seven and it was set to expire for thirty years. So it did expire in two thousand and seventeen, as I mentioned.
Yeah. Okay.
So just to maintain community, especially within your area, there is the covenant that you're referencing, Mr. Driscoll, it doesn't apply anymore as it has sunset. Now you're, if, if the position being taken is that you know, that's unfortunate, but there's no controlling rule or regulation or again covenant that restricts this particularly. And again, the town, unless it is, even if, if it is on record, there's a question as to whether it's controlling for purposes of zoning.
I, I fully understand that. I mean, I, again, all I can suggest and state is is our view on whether it's appropriate for the neighborhood. But I certainly understand I, that the restrictive covenants have expired. I could have not mentioned that, but I made sure I did because I wanted to make sure, I wanted to be upfront. I fully understand. There is nothing certainly from a registry of deeds, recorded document or anything else to prohibit this based on the restrictive covenant. So strictly up to the, at this point, to the, to the board.
Okay, thank you. And your concern, please, is more that you don't want to see a proliferation of this activity as opposed to the, the property itself?
Well, I mean, I think the, the issue is that this is a, this is, this is a neighborhood of, of very high value homes. And not in my view, the kind of homes where people would expect to have poultry houses or as the, as the restricted covenant went on to mention, rabbit hutches, dog or cat kennels, mink kennels, barnyard animals. I mean, that was what this neighborhood was constructed to be. And at the time, certainly when we bought this house in nineteen ninety-seven, it was a pretty expensive property for the time and is, it is today. And to me, people that are looking to be in that range of, of house price are not necessarily interested in having chickens or other barnyard animals in the neighborhood. I could be completely wrong, but I can only, you know, offer, you know, my view and, and again, it's, there's nothing that I can point to that can prohibit this. It's strictly up to the board at this point.
Okay, thank you. Michelle, Brendan, thoughts?
I can appreciate where he's coming from, but if there's nothing, if the covenants have expired and there's nothing preventing us from granting it, I would view this application no different of any of the others that have come before us that we have granted.
And Brendan?
I, yeah, I can appreciate Mr. Driscoll's concerns. That area is not too far from myself as well. We walk down there and down Shasta with our dog. But as he even mentioned, there's several of other items that are on that covenant, such as parking cars in the, you know, in the driveway, paint colors, things of that nature, which I'm sure have been broken, maybe, if the right, right term, and the fact that the covenant has expired. Doesn't prevent Ms. Bowers from her right to have, have chickens.
Thank you and noted. So, and for purposes of all for the community, when this board has been presented with petitions, permits and the like for coop construction and keep the, you know, the having of chickens, generally most of the concerns that are addressed are those that fall within the zoning bylaws. And they're not only controlling within the situation, but also once those coops are constructed and the care and upkeep and all of the things that go with it, such that if there's a problem, whether of any nature, residents, be they in the neighborhood or Butters across the street, et cetera, have every opportunity to alert the town to those concerns. So I appreciate and respect, quite frankly, the candor from Mr. Driscoll, and I understand, but notwithstanding the, 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 the covenants that were enacted and the, the idea that they might be controlling the bylaws to permit it. And so with the, so noted for the purposes of the hearing, the objection to the request on behalf, formally on behalf of the Driscolls at two Snowcrest. And I thank you for your time and appreciate it. Is there anybody else from the area or the neighborhood that is with us that may not have joined at the outset of the conversation or the hearing?
Mr. Green, I just want to thank you and the board for giving me the opportunity and giving us the opportunity to to express our opinions. And I certainly understand the position of the board. And, and again, I wanted to be as clear as I could about why we felt the way we did, but I certainly appreciate how the board has a different perspective, given your, your role in the town and, and the role you have to play as, as officials in that role. So thank you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate your, your acknowledgement as well as your participation. And again, regard, if in the event the permit is granted after, at this hearing, you know, it is not just, you know, go forward and do whatever you want. Every, every party that's been granted a permit for any number of purposes, chickens, home occup, business occupations, et cetera, whatever the case might be, they're still beholden to the rules and the preservation of, you know, community. And again, if there's a problem, by all means, whether it's in the case of Snowcrest Run or or any of the matters before the board tonight or in the future, obviously, the community is more than empowered and, and often encouraged to let the town know the activity that might be a problem. So without, again, since there's no other conversation from the community, I'd once again, maybe re-new a motion to close the public hearing and go to deliberation within the board. Can I get a motion again for the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing times two.
Second on that, Brendan?
Brendan Riley, second the motion.
All in favor of closing the public hearing on the matter?
Michelle Bodie and I.
Brendan Riley, aye.
Bob Green, aye. So within the board itself, having heard this, the additional comments from the Driscolls, I noted that Michelle and Brendan, if I'm correct, while we appreciate that, you know, in the past, I'd just like to acknowledge that you know, we have granted permits for raising chickens, construction of hoops and the like, and obviously have alerted everybody to what I just noted, which is going forward, it's just, you know, you've got the care and upkeep. Does anybody have any thoughts with regard to this being any different for purposes of that for three snowcrest run?
Yeah, I guess, you know, covenant aside, I, I do think it's important to acknowledge that, you know, a neighbor, a neighbor has showed up and expressed disappointment. I think for me though, the fact that it wasn't with this particular situation and they were, you know, seemingly okay with the coop at this property, it was more in general, didn't want any properties to have them. To me, it wasn't then an overriding reason to deny. So I'm
I know, it's over.
Of approving the
It's not gonna matter.
And it's a fair, it's a fair observation to be had, but again, since in this case, not that they may have been controlling, but since the, the covenants themselves have expired and I think the placement as designed and submitted to the board is well within the property and it's a modest request for the number. We've had people that in the past for the town have asked for the, you know, double that, if not as, as many as is permitted. I have every confidence that this won't present a problem for the neighbors in terms of of the care and upkeep and as, but with regard to the idea of the covenant and the question of quality of the neighborhood, I, I don't think it I don't think it's as compelling as it might be have been, maybe when the covenant was still in place. So but that's just my position on this. If Brendan has anything to add, please, by all means.
No, I, I tend to agree. Bob, I know we've had chicken coops and requests for chicken coops come before the board and other, I should say, more affluent areas of town in the past, similar to Snowcrest and Shasta and whether or not they had, you know, covenants that had expired, I'm unaware of, but we, you know, certainly had approved those.
Okay. I have nothing more to add. If either of you feel the same, can, would anybody like to bring a motion to close the board hearing and bring the matter to a vote?
Yeah, I can make a motion. Sorry, I can put forward a vote, proposed motion. Assuming.
Please.
Okay, back where we were. I, Michelle Bodie, I move to grant a special permit for up to four chickens. The chicken coop cannot be any closer than ten feet to the rear or side lot line or twenty feet from the front lot line. Roosters are prohibited and subject to board of health approval and oversight.
Just a clarification, Michelle, I believe it was six chickens because that was the minimum required for purchase.
Sorry, did I not say up to six?
Four, you had said.
Okay, sorry, up to six.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Brendan, if you might want to second that?
I second the motion.
All right, thank you for that. With that being said, all in favor of the motion as, as noted?
Michelle Bodie and I.
Brendan Riley, aye.
Bob Green, aye. Thank you, board. Kathy, if you might take a moment just to alert Ms. Bowers as well as anybody else interested in the, the matter as to what will go, what will happen going forward?
So I'm going to write up the decision, send it out for signatures from the members. Once I get it back and stamped with the town clerk, it starts the twenty day appeal period. I'll send you notice of when that date will be. And after that date, you can, or in the meantime, you could check in with board of health and get your permit from them as well.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Okay, again, thank you for, for participating in this as well as in particular, the Driscolls and anybody else that is interested in the matter. We appreciate your cooperation as well as your participation. Thank you and good luck with your, with your project. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Our next matter on tonight's agenda is seventy-five Main Street, a matter that was an appeal of the building commissioner. I apologize. I think we first were, we visited this matter in June of this year. With regard to that, I will read the hearing notice that went out at that time. Petition on of Sean Nichols for the property at seventy-five Main Street, North Reading, Mass. Map twenty-three parcel thirty-one. An appeal of the decision of the building commissioner for the denial of the use of the property, the toilets, portable rental and leasing in the highway business district, according to section twenty-two hundred dash thirty-nine of the North Reading zoning bylaws. Since that public hearing, the matter has gone through some consideration, including an approach that was made to town council. And, and I would note at our last meeting, if my memory correct, the petitioning party on behalf of Nichols and effectively seventy-five Main Street had engaged council. For purposes seventy-five, can I, who is with us tonight on the For purposes seventy-five, uh, can I, uh, who is with us tonight um, on the matter?
Good evening, Chairperson Breen, it's Jill Mann. I'm here on behalf of. Flush and Sean Nichols, and I believe I see Sean Nichols is also in attendance.
Okay, great, thank you.
So.
So. Yeah, please update us on what um, what has transpired since June.
Absolutely. So in, right after our last meeting, and by the way, thank you very much for holding um, the continued public hearing. I I know it can be trying during the summer for everybody's schedules and I appreciate all of the board members' time. Thank you. Um, at the last hearing, uh, there was an issue, there was a. Correspondence between the town and legal counsel relative to the use. Of the particular property and whether or not there was any ability to permit it in a certain manner. Now, this property, clearly the use is prohibited under the bylaws and the property. And the town does not allow use variances. However, since receiving that letter, I actually did have a conversation with Attorney Eichmann. And we discussed various possibilities. For example, this particular property has been in existence and been used. Since the late nineteen forties. So my conversation with Attorney Eichmann was. There is a possibility that this particular use is a legally existing non-conforming use. And that the board can vote to actually grant a special permit to um, ratify. That particular classification. So what I have done since the last board meeting is obviously have a conversation with Attorney Eichmann who says yes. You know, that is a possible approach, subject of course to the board's review and authorization and approval of a special. Um, and all the material facts related there too. So after I had that conversation to actually get, you know, legal opinion that yes, the board is entitled to grant that type of relief. I then called and spoke to the assessor's office to see if I could get information relative to the personal property tax records. Because those are how, those records are what establish with the past uses. In addition to that, I spoke with John Nelson, who is the um, the the living heir to the property. He was the person who transferred the property um, from the Nelson family to the existing owner. I also had a conversation with a couple of various business owners who operated out of the property. In order to get an understanding of when those uses began, how those uses began. And if there were conversations with the then existing um, building inspector. After I had done that, I actually spoke with um, Mr. Noel because I wanted to tell him, this is the, this is the um. Line of thought that I'm going through. This is what I think would be an appropriate remedy for the subs- for the present solution. And would allow the board actually to hear all the material facts versus just a, you know, cease and desist order which is currently pending. Um, so, and obviously, Mr. Noel can't comment. He's the zoning enforcement officer. He can tell you what the, what is permitted, what isn't. But there is the ability to seek this special permit for illegally existing non-conforming use. So what I would ask the board at this point would be for two things. One would be to continue the cease and desist because we can't. Have a decision issued because then it actually triggers other different legal remedies and in order to actually have this matter be resolved. In the most time efficient and cost efficient manner for not only the applicant but also for the town. It would be to continue this particular hearing for the cease and desist for three months. That would allow me to file for the special permit. The special permit would come before you in September, at which time I would have all of the facts, including affidavit support from the. Um, assessor or review by your legal counsel, and then we could have a full public hearing. Then the board would i- issue its decision pro or con. And then we would proceed with the existing cease and desist order following that. Because should the board decide that the materials presented actually do support a legally existing non-conforming use. Then the cease and desist would actually be resolved in a manner to say, yes, it is prohibited use. Yes, Mr. Noel was correct. However, the property, because of its historic and ongoing use. Is protected from changes in prohibition such as this. Um, so that would allow that type of a resolution. Um, I do have materials. So what I also did, which was an onerous task, I can assure you. I pulled every bylaw since the nineteen fifties and every zoning map since nineteen forty-one. So that I could outline what all the zoning districts were, what all the zoning changes were, and then what all the bylaw amendment changes are. And I do have a summary that I could present and show you this evening. I don't know if the board really wants to delve into that tonight. Or if we prefer to have things in writing, um, that it can vet ahead of time and then review. So at this point, um, Chairperson Breen, I I I defer to you with regard to what our requests are presently.
Uh, okay, thank you. Uh. So again, my last. Uh. Focus on this matter was the conversation I had with Attorney Eichmann of um, at um, KP. And law and um. And I did receive an, a note from him after our last meeting that uh, you had touched. Uh, you had reached out and had uh. Discuss the matter with him. So, and I appreciate that. That was the purpose of the continuance for tonight. Um. And again, thank you for the. The explanation of, of the time you have spent on this and um, it's. For me, it's much appreciated and I'm, I'm, I I can't speak for um, the rest of the board, but I'm sure they are heartened by that as well. Uh. So. A moment ago, you said you needed a three month window. Was that three months from June? So you're bringing us to September?
So it would actually.
The purposes of further continuance?
So it would actually be to November because any decision issued by the board has to have time to ripen and I. I mean, I'm more than willing to only get sixty days, but I have to file, so it requires, you know, thirty days ahead of time. So even if I filed tomorrow, the first time we could have the hearing would be September eighth. And then if the board decided that it wanted to get commentary from Attorney Eichmann following, it would bring us to October. So ninety days was simply a fail safe for the continuance, but sixty days would also be appropriate.
So again, um, the underlying, so. The, the legal question that was noted and uh, quite. Um, impressively brought, which was. You know, the idea of changing a non-conforming. Use, changing, you know, making that change for. Reliable purposes and. I would have to. Not only review, I mean, as with the board, we would have, we'd have to have opportunity to have a better understanding of. That. Um. What's the word I'm searching for? Uh. Process and. Also the opportunity to make sure that we. Were conducting that. Review appropriately, effectively. Uh, which might avail a need to access counsel again. That notwithstanding, I do have an, uh. I have a concern that this matter. Uh, the continued continuancing, I hate to use that. Phrasology, um, for an activity that. Black and white on our books is just not permitted in town. So that has been, that has been the, the larger issue that is. The shadow that I. And I think I, I'm confident the board as well. Uh, has a concern about. Now granted, uh, there's been no reports of. Problems, uh, healths particularly at seventy-five Main. But at the same time, um. Moving this over without a clear understanding of um. Of whether this resolution is feasible and likely. Which is an interesting approach because if there were ever a chance to succeed. In a denial on our parting, um, before. Uh, a court that would very likely have to be established as well, just to maintain the business, which I will again know. Um. I have every interest in maintaining, uh, they've been nothing but a, a, a solid. Business part, party here within town, so um, thank you to um, Mr. Nichols in the business for that. But I'm just interested in thoughts from the board because again, it would appear that this is trying to be. Moved again and I'm trying to see if everybody, anybody else has the same concern that I might have just on that idea alone.
Yeah, I do. Um, I also, you know, not having had the direct conversation you've had with town council, um, I don't. I am sure you're representing the truth of that conversation, but I'd feel a whole heck of a lot better if it was in writing saying what you discussed. And this gives a valuable path forward. That would give you a lot more comfort about the pause, but if we're. If we're doing a continuance for six months, or sorry, sixty days, ninety days, and we then have a conversation with town council and they said, absolutely not. Of course, that's not a viable option. We're back where we started and this has been on the books for a while.
I mean, in that case, I, we could continue just for thirty days to allow me to file. Which would then give you the opportunity to have the conversation with Attorney Eichmann. And then you'd have the petition before you. It would still only be thirty days. And that way you can get that uh, written confirmation because I understand, I would, I would want verification too. Um, so we could get that verification from Attorney Eichmann and more importantly, you would have all of that information in your hands. I, I truly wanted to get it to you before tonight's meeting. It just was. Too much to try and get to you before tonight's meeting. Um, but we could continue for thirty days, uh, because. Otherwise, i- i- you know, the, there has to be a decision and the decision may in fact not be. The proper one for the town. Obviously, it wouldn't, it would, it would harm the applicant, but maybe it wouldn't be the proper thing for the town. So just a thirty day continuance in the interim and then you can make a decision, Mrs. Ms. Bodian, about. Whether or not it makes sense to continue again to allow the board to have additional public hearings beyond next month.
Sure, appreciate that. Bob, can you remind me, this one also got bumped on our end because of quorum issues one meeting? Uh, yes. Okay, so I, I mean, given, given once, once was on us, um, I, I think that's a reasonable request. To have a thirty days to give a little bit of time. I, I'm not comfortable sixty and ninety, but if we, we took a mulligan on one of these, I think I used that correctly. Um, then I, I'm comfortable with thirty days.
And again, uh, within the thirty day window, um. Respectfully, counsel, um, is that enough time for you to make the filing?
Oh, have, absolutely.
Or is it, is it, are you, okay, so I thank you, truly, um, because I know the task. Uh, it's not an easy one. Uh, Brendan, any thoughts?
Uh, I'm just curious, has anyone responded to um, either the board of. Held, uh, helped, uh, inquiries regarding the Title V report? There's uh, some information here about hazardous waste management system, et cetera, and then the um. Inquiries from the Conservation Commission.
Sure, we absolutely have, Mr. Riley. Thank you for bringing that up. I should have mentioned it earlier. So yes, we have resolved all issues with the Board of Health that is settled. We are before the Conservation Commission and have. Had to certify the property and then outline the lines and then we are actually working with them. Um, to make sure that there were some areas that had ended up being filled. Um, in particular, you have that twelve and a half foot no disturb area and that was, that was actually um, violated. So we are pulling back, we've put in silt fence, so we're working with the Conservation Commission and we'll resolve all of those issues. Hopefully in the next few days as far as pulling back to the line where we're supposed to be. And then we have to go back before the Conservation Commission because you have to have a remediation plan that they approve. And that's what we're doing now. And as far as hazardous waste, um, so this type of activity has no hazardous waste. It's not. It's, it, I, I know that was said because there was concern, but it's not hazardous waste.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Uh. Inspector Noel, um, your thoughts? Especially since uh, you're the party that cited them and obviously with, with good reason.
My thoughts regarding.
Uh. While ultimately. Has it, have, has there been any activity that you've made, been made aware of beyond the initial? Um. Complaint or um, notice that you might have received?
No, I have, I haven't received any other, any other complaints or any, any other issues at this point in time. And from what I heard from Conservation, they are moving forward and they are, they are working with them. And uh, the Board of Health as well, they um. The, the property owners and uh, Ms. Mann have been uh, working with uh, the Board of Health and, and, and Conservation.
Okay, uh, thank you for that input. Um. Uh, Ms. Mann, uh, I know that you've got your clients and uh, I think parties related to Flush, maybe. Uh, joining us, is there anything they might want to add during this um? Uh, during the public hearing part of this conversation or the today or? Uh. Or, or, yep. Or what you've put forward um, enough for them?
I think they felt comfortable at this point.
Okay, uh. As this, this is a public hearing, is there anybody else in the area along Main Street or within the community that has any thoughts regarding? The matter before us regarding seventy-five Main Street? Okay, thank you. Uh, does the board have any questions or thoughts before we? Close the public consideration on the continuance before we discuss that within the board?
I don't know.
Okay. So, uh. Given that, uh, given everything that's been said and the work that's been done and uh, the fact that uh, the, the area seems to be um, progressing. Uh, with, within the town itself. Um. I don't see a problem with a thirty day continuance. I'd ideally like to keep this. Um. Moving in, in, in a, in a manner that will ultimately resolve in a resolution of some sort. Or not only the benefit of the community, but um, in this case. Um, uh, you know, the parties involved, uh, Michelle. Brendan, your thoughts?
I'm times a thirty day continuance. Um, and I think on our end, let's work with town council to get his understanding or an updated understanding of what might be feasible here.
Yeah, for that purpose, um, Attorney Mann, so does. Has anything been put over to um, KP Law from you on this or is it just? Uh, the conversation you had with them, which I understand, but.
It was just that conversation.
Okay, um. Specifically, if the thirty day continuance is granted, when, when do you think they'd receive um, your? Um, research and or? But, uh, petition.
The application will probably go in um, within the week. I'm just waiting for the abutters list.
Okay.
As soon to complete it. I have my research, but I need, it, within a week.
I have the.
Oh, wonderful.
Give it out until I give out the hearing notice.
Oh, all right, usually, I, I deal with CPC and they, okay, so then basically I just have to wrap up the memo and. We apply online, so it should be, it'll, it'll be within the week.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, Brendan, thoughts?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm fine granting the uh, thirty day continuance, given the fact that they've. Replied to the Board of Health, uh, dealing with the Conservation Commission issues. Seems like they're doing everything that they can. Within their power to try to resolve this, so I'm happy to work with them.
Uh, noted, thank you. Uh, board, um, and uh, Jerry as well as Kathy. Um, as I look at September, uh. Being that there's uh, the second, uh, which is the usual tracking or um, meeting time. We haven't had a conversation for this, at this meeting. I, uh, if we're remaining consistent would be um. Us, Thursday, September twelfth for our next meeting, which. While it, while it is five weeks, um, and it exceeds thirty days, it's also the holiday in, in there. So, um, uh. Are you both available, um? Uh, Thursday, September twelfth?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Uh, Michelle, Brendan?
I'm available.
Sorry, hang, hang on one second, um.
The deadline for that date, Attorney Man, is, um, August twenty-ninth.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, I, I should be available.
Okay, great. So, um. I'd like to move to, uh, grant a continuance of this matter until, um, Thursday. Uh, September twelfth, um, if I could get a second.
Uh, Brendan Riley, second.
All in favor of continuing the matter till, uh, September? Twelfth for continued public hearing, um, all in favor to say aye.
Brendan Riley, aye.
So Boden and I.
Bob, Brendan and I, uh, thank you. So, um, Attorney Man, uh, this, I would appreciate that you get that information over to, um. KP Law, and, um, I will reach out to. On behalf of the Board in the Town or the Board in particular, I'll reach out to, uh, Attorney Eichmann. And, uh, alert him that, uh, something will be coming and. And then once he's received it to, uh, he'll, I'll hopefully, he'll have him reach, uh, come back to us. And, um, let us know in, in turn, uh. If possible, um, send, if you could send the same materials to Town. So, um, Kathy Morgan can get it over to us, uh, that would be also appreciated.
Absolutely.
And, um, I think that, uh, pretty much covers it for tonight, thank you.
Great, thank you very much, we appreciate your time this evening and we will see you in September and you will hear from me in the next week. Take care.
Great, thank you so much.
Good night.
Have a good evening.
You as well.
Uh, returning to tonight's agenda, um. The next matter is, um, when, uh, on behalf of one hundred and ninety-two Haverhill Street. Um, this matter was also continued over, um, from a prior hearing date, uh, that having, and to tonight, so. Public hearing will be held on Thursday, August eighth, on the petition of Greg Mesmer. One ninety-two Haverhill Street, North Reading. Map fifty-three parcel twenty, on an appeal of the decision of the Building Commissioner for a denial of having a second dwelling. On the property in accordance to section two hundred dash thirty-three permitted uses. Of the North Reading bylaws, um, is Mr. Mesmer or any, uh, party representing? Uh, Mr. Mesmer or the property at one ninety-two Haverhill with tonight? I think, uh, he has to be unmuted, Kathy?
Yeah, I just asked him, okay.
Is that it?
Yep, we can hear you.
Hi, we can hear you.
I'm great.
Good evening, good evening, Mr. Mesmer. Uh, I know the matter, uh, was continued, I appreciate your, uh, uh, cooperation for that purpose. Uh, as our unable, uh, unavailable, inability to previously reach quorum, um. Since this is a notice of a, uh, this is a petition of a denial by the Building Commissioner. Um, and Mr. Noel is with us tonight, um. Uh, if you might want to take a moment, uh, Mr. Noel to, uh. Ex- explain the, um, the denial that, uh, right, uh, the matter before the board tonight.
Well, to be, from the beginning, the. Mr. Mesma put in for a, uh, well, his, his plumber put in for a plumbing permit. Plumbing permit was for to install two shell cocks, which is basically two, um, hose bibs that go on the outside part of your house. Um, we, the plumbing inspector thought it was just for the actual house itself, so he issued the permit. Come to find out, it was for the, his bond that he has and it was to put in a, the, all the plumbing for a kitchen. All the plumbing for a bathroom as well. Um, and then when, uh, when I basically looked into this, I, I just didn't feel comfortable with this. Uh, Mr. Mesma did come into the office, we spoke, I told him we would, uh, I would go out and I would, uh, perform an inspection. And, um, he was, he was, he was a gentleman about the whole thing, he basically showed me the whole bond. Um, it does, it does appear to be a second dwelling. Um, and he's also proposing to put in another septic system for this, this dwelling. And, um. The, uh, then, uh, Kathy Morgan, uh, basically spoke with the plumbing inspector and. Plumbing inspector realized what was happening there, so Kathy went and she had to amend the permit. So, and this is the reason why we're here is because I, I just don't, I just don't have the authority to issue him a permit for. A second dwelling on, on his property.
Okay, um, thank you. Mr. Mesmer, um, if you might, um. Discuss or let the board know, um, the basis of your. Uh, objection to the, um, the site, the, the denial that you're appealing.
I'm afraid it's just been a misunderstanding, uh, unfortunate one. Unfortunate for us, this is a challenging process we've been navigating. We live in an old house. On a sizable lot, requires a lot of maintenance, there's always a project, we're fortunate enough to have a barn where we have a shop. And space to get things done and occasionally have a little fun. Uh, in addition to the shop, there's a ping pong table, exercise equipment, a media room where we can gather with friends and family. To watch movies and celebrate the success of our local sports teams, we spend a lot of time in the barn. And when we're in the barn, our special needs son Justin is with us, we care for him and he's always with us. It's a bit of a nuisance to have, have to travel back to the house. To use a bathroom, wash up and clean things, we would just like to have bathrooms in a shop sink in our barn, please. It's not a separate dwelling, nobody's going to live there, it's just a place where we spend a lot of time.
So, um. So, um, Mr. Noel, so the, the concern for the plumbing is this, this. That they're not just putting in nothing more than a basin or a, uh, or a toilet, or is it? The idea here is that they're creating a, that's. Second dwelling, just so there's an understanding by everybody as to what you see. That moves it from being just an accessory, a tw- um, a bath, a half bath or a full, even a full bath and an accessory structure.
In accordance to the Massachusetts State Building Code, when you're, when you're putting a kitchen and you're putting a bathroom in, um. That's, that's considered a second dwelling, um, it's, it's, it's considered a, another unit, so, um. Once again, I don't have the, it, it's a single family zoned area, I just don't have the authority to, to, um. To allow that to happen, um, I, I wasn't about to issue a permit. Um, for something that's, that according to the building codes illegal. But if he were, if he were to take the whole kitchen out, um, then, then is it, then that becomes a different story, if you're just putting in a bathroom.
So, thank you for that, I mean, I think that, that distinction has to be. Discussed and explained to some degree explored here, because while I can appreciate, um, Mr. Mesmer's. Thoughts of the inconvenience of going to and from, in this case, the barn, which would make it. For all intents and purposes and accessory structure back to the main, to your main, uh, single family home, the dwelling. Um, you know, it's one thing to be putting in a bathroom and even perhaps, you know, a shower, but it. It's taking on all the characterizations of it, of a, of a dwelling, now whether it's for that purpose in use. Is open to. You know, conversation maybe, but at the same time, um. You know, the building codes and bylaws that exist within the town. Are to better clarify and, and characterize property uses. And maintain a consistency within the community, so. You know, do you have any thoughts on what was just noted, I mean, it's not just a bathroom. It sounds like as if it's got a functioning kitchen and. Yes, you know, that comes with, whether it's electrical or gas, I mean, there's just certain. Character characteristics and attributes that have to be. Seen for what they are and where the, the permits are for. You know, you, you're zoned for a certain uses and purposes within the town itself, so. That raises the concern and obviously is the purpose, the reason that the permit wasn't approved. If I'm the view of this building inspector, so, Mr. Mesmer, I'm just trying to get an idea of. What? What, we're not on the property, so what, what it really is bringing about?
Uh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood the question.
So. And, Mr. Noel, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the point is, is that you're not just putting in a bathroom. You're not just putting it, you're putting in a kitchen with a bathroom.
There's no kitchen, it's, it's a shop sink, uh.
All the, all the, uh, excuse me, but all of the plumbing, um, and you even told me all the plumbing is there for a kitchen and. You keep calling it a shop sink. I don't want to argue, I, no, no, I don't want to argue with you, when in accordance to the building code and the plumbing code. You have a washer and dryer hookup, you have a, you have a whole kitchen, all, all the plumbing is there to, and. Basically install a kitchen, you also have that sink, um, and I, I don't have a problem if you have a bathroom. I, I don't have that issue, and if you just had a, a slop sink, I wouldn't have an issue with that at all as well. But where you, where you have all that plumbing in for that, the whole bathroom, you have a stack that goes up, up through. And you plan on installing a, a separate septic, septic system. Um, it, it's just, it, it gives me all, all, all the characteristics of, of being a. A single family dwelling and once again, I don't have the authority to do that and I'm, I'm not going to sit here and basically say that, um. That it isn't, um. What, what, what I have seen, um. And, you know, I sympathize for your, for your issues that you, that you do have with your family, um. But if we, if we were to just to look at this as the ba- as, as a bathroom, that's a totally different story.
Yeah, we, we, uh, we had a septic system engineered by LJR. Plumbing, uh, excuse me, engineering, um, we hired chain plumbing to. Do the rough in, uh, while they were doing the rough in, they, they asked, well. You know, it, it's a very sensitive thing with venting and the way the pipes have to run in this old place. They asked me if I wanted to put a laundry in, I wasn't considering it at the time, but they said, you know, now is the time to do it. Because it would be not easy to do later, I don't really have any intention of using it. It was just sort of like, okay, while we're here, let's do that. We really just want to have a place to clean the paintbrushes and use the bathroom where, you know. Uh, there's two levels, so the upper level is where the media room is, and then the lower level is where the shop is. And, uh, the upstairs is more for entertaining and the lower level is more for working, so. It's nice, it would be nice to have facilities where we can. Use a bathroom and, and clean up and, and, and wash things, that's, that's our intention.
Can I ask how, wh- what's a slop sink, shop sink, how are we using that phrase in the sentence?
Uh, I'm sorry, what?
What, what's a shop sink or slop sink, what, what is the phrase you're using, just an oversized sink?
Uh, well, in this case, it's a, it's a repurposed old kitchen sink, uh, that we're going to use in our shop. So that we can clean things.
But that needs to be a separate sink.
Like a utility sink, I guess, is what I would refer to it as.
And that can't be the same sink as used in one of the bathrooms, that you're saying you need a third, third sink, so you have a half bath, a full bath?
It's a bigger, it's a bigger sink, it's a bigger sink with a sprayer.
Okay, and Jerry, am I hearing you correctly that if the plumbing looked different? And it was a standalone utility sink, there'd be no issue? Um, cause that then wouldn't be considered a kitchen under the building code?
It would not be considered a kitchen under the building code if it was just that, but with the amount of plumbing that I saw there, um. It's definitely a, a kitchen, and with the amount of venting that I saw there, it's definitely a kitchen.
But I don't understand, what, what is the, what would, what would, uh?
Well, the kitchen is not in your shop, the kitchen is in a living room area, like you, you've already, you've constructed a living room area. You've constructed a living room area in this barn and the kitchen, it becomes part of this living room area. I did see the shop area in which you, in which you were speaking of, which is very impressive, you did a great job with that. Um, and you did a fantastic job with your finishes that you, that you didn't, um, on the property. But I'm just basically calling what I, calling what I saw, um, I'm, I'm not trying to change anything here, um. What, what I saw was plumbing for a kitchen. The whole wall is plum, that whole twenty foot or twenty-five foot wall, whatever it may be, that whole wall is plum, then you have a full bath, you have a half bath. Um, you have a heating system, um, so it's just that's. Once again, I'm just calling what I saw, I'm not trying to hurt you in any way, if you, if, if the board wants to give you something relative to. Just. Allowing bathrooms, these, these are things that you have to think about and you have to ask for.
Okay, I, I guess I, I, I don't know how to respond, I, I guess there's a disagreement in terms of what our intentions are. For this space, um, it's something we've been using for a long time and. We've always planned on trying to get this done, I think I submitted materials that provided the history of, you know. A water line was put in by the town in two thousand and one. Uh, we always intended on trying to bring some water into the barn, a water line has finally been brought into the barn. We have a, a water line that has now been brought into the barn, we haven't. And it was what I thought was an approved septic plan. We'd just like to put a bathroom. And a sink in our barn, that's what we would like to do.
Do you have any, any photos of the interior or any plans of what it will look like or any? Like, what kind of sink picked out, do you have anything to give us some documentation to go along with the story? You're describing of what you hope it to look like?
Um, well, let's see, uh, you're, you're showing some images of, uh. Sort of, of the before and, and after, uh, of the barn when we renovated it in two thousand and one. In two thousand and five, an addition was put on to it. In two thousand and five, an addition was put on to it. And then I think we have some floor plans that kind of show the space. It's a pretty sizable space. So that's, what's that right there?
This second.
That's, that's, that's a vent, uh, up on the second level. That's a, uh.
That's your plumbing.
That's a sink, uh, location there. That's, uh, some more plumbing. That's the, uh, yeah, that's the laundry hookup, at the moment that laundry is actually got cabinets in front of it. Really don't have any intention of using it, it was just a suggestion by the plumber because it was sort of a now or never kind of a suggestion. And as long as they were in there, they said, why not? Anyway, that's where the utility sink would be, right there. This is the other side of the shop wall, it's basically an. The other side of this space where the ping pong table is, is a continuation of the shop, the ping pong table is. More oftentimes used as a layout table for projects. Let me show it to us. It might be upside down.
That's the garage, that, that's, that's your heating system in your garage, which, which.
Yeah, that was put in in two thousand and one. Uh, to prevent my batteries and, uh. Paint from freezing.
Yeah, that's it, just, just so you know, if you were going to use that space. Um, you can't have that heating system in a garage, because what you're doing is if you have a vehicle in there, you're drawing. Whatever cabins that are being made from your vehicle and any other fumes into the house. So, um. So you would have to probably look into that. If, if you did decide, if they did decide to go.
So are there any cars being? Is it storing cars currently?
There was a vehicle in there when I, when I originally met, uh, Mr. Noel.
But no, uh, no drawings or images or anything of what? What this will look like, have you picked out the, the sink or the finishes or anything? Um, you know, any, anything other than what you're saying this will turn into that you could show us?
Uh, so, well, the lower level where we'd like to have the utility sink is. Relatively unfinished, um. And then the upper level where we have a media room is, is a fairly finished space. I, I guess I don't have any images of that, I just have. My drawings that I submitted.
And you're putting sinks on both levels?
I'm sorry?
You're putting sinks on both levels?
Uh, the upper level would, you'd like to have a bathroom up there. And then we'd like to have a, a half bath on the, on the lower level.
But only one shop sinks, I thought you described two sinks, two extra sinks, not related to the bathrooms.
The, the sink is a. Uh, it's, it's, it's for the shop, so it's not part of a bathroom. There would also be. A bathroom that would have a toilet and a sink. And then, uh, upstairs, we'd like to have a bathroom with a toilet and a sink as well.
In the area that Jerry, uh, Mister Inspector Noel, that you described as being. A kitchen, half kitchen, where is? I'm, I'm not following where that is, or is it just that they've, the. Be exposed. Piping and or, um. You know, gas or electric leads. Wherever the dryer hookup is, et cetera, that's what's bringing your concern that this is more than just. Going to end up being. Either a shop or a recreation area. Where is the kitchen that you noted, just so?
It's all the plumbing that is, all, all the plumbing that is against that wall gives every indication that it is a kitchen. Um, and then. There, there's also another, 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 uh, set of pictures, I think I sent that off to Kathy as well. And it, it has, it's more definitive. But, um, it basically shows that whole, that whole area being a kitchen. Once again, I don't have any, any issues with Mister Mesmer doing, doing as such, but. We would have to, we would have to comply. Um, and also, we'd have to make sure that we'd have to do, you'd have to take the sheet rock off a wall because we'd have to do a full inspection. To make sure that everything complies with the Massachusetts State Building Code, any, any holes that were bored by the plumbers and our electricians. We need to make sure that those are sealed properly and, uh, we, and, and also to make sure that there's. There's no structural issues. And we still do have a structural problem because, um, he never finished a. Part of the footing, a footing that he had fixed in his house back in twenty twenty two. Mister Mesmer, was it twenty twenty nineteen twenty, uh, was, was it, I mean, twenty twenty two?
I, I believe that footing, um, has been signed off.
It was never, it's never signed off by the town, we, we never inspected it.
Um, actually, the, the previous assistant, uh. Building inspector had come to. Inspect our. Wood stove. And then he said, you still have an open permit for this footing, and would you like me to sign that off now? And we went and looked at it and he said. Great job, and he says, okay, I'll take care of that, so I assumed that was signed off as well.
I spoke with Mister Anzalone about that, um. What you basically just said. He told me that there is no structural narrative, you had a structural narrative originally. And he told me he couldn't sign off on it. Because there was no structural narrative, because we never performed any inspections. When you put in a footing, there's four, there's four inspections that need to be done when you're putting in a footing. We need to see the excavation, we need to see the footing, we need to see the rebar, and then we need to see your wall. So, and the. We never just go and do a final inspection on, on any kind of wall like that. So these are just some issues that I have concern about what, what you're telling me, what you're saying. So it's just concerns. I want to make sure things are being done properly and they're being done right.
Yeah, we went with, uh, just draw it to. Put together an appropriate drawing that would. Meet your requirements and then, uh. We had that. I thought we had the area inspected by the same gentleman who came and followed up with the. What I thought was the final inspection, uh, I thought we were. Following. What needed to be done with that process, uh, so it's coming as a surprise to me. That this is not in compliance.
Kathy, are there any additional photos?
I was looking to see if I had, um. Something else and.
Just wish to get more of the interior, what, I mean, it sounds like. There's additional factors we don't have access to about what that, how it's laid out on the inside, how it's furnished, how there's a living room, like.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any layout of the, um, of the area.
It sounds like Jerry, it's just basically like a, a one large open. Uh, space upstairs with the exception of, uh, second. Second bathroom and a kitchen, which is all part of that. Open. Space almost like a, like a studio apartment, if you will.
That's what, yeah, pretty much, you.
Okay.
Pretty much have it, yeah.
But that's what I gather, at least from what I can. Refer from the photos here.
Does, and, and. And just to basically state back. And Mister Mesmer is correct, he does have a shop in there as well.
And that's down on the, the first floor?
Correct.
Okay.
So Jerry, what? What could the Mesmers do to? To? Take away the. Potential concerns or the possible. The, to. To put them back on track for nothing more than what they are. Representing to the. Community tonight, which is. Nothing more than. A bath on the second and a bath on the first with a utility. Sink for the shop purposes, I mean. You know. It sounds like they have other issues or that other concerns that have to be. Brought, uh, con- considered as well, that being, I think, a footing that you noted as well as. Inspection of the work that's been done and installed, but. You know, the idea here of. What would? What would the Mesmers need to do in order to? Lay. Our concerns or the town's concerns that this was going to end up. Effectively being. Potential, a, a, a second dwelling. On a, on, within that, within that accessory structure.
That's not something I need to prove, that would be something that Mister Mesmer would need to prove, um. I, I already basically stated that, um. I don't have any issue if he has a bathroom, I don't have any issue if he has a slop sink, but. With everything, all the other plumbing that I saw in there, it's. I've been doing this a long time. I've been doing this for well over forty years. Maybe four, um. Well, if I show my age, forty five to forty nine years. And I've seen, I've seen all of this and. Nobody can tell me that that is not a second dwelling being installed, but. Mister Mesmer is, as he said, he's doing a first family and his family does have some, some medical issues, um. Which I, once I, once again sympathize with. But. The fact is, is, um. It, it is a second dwelling and. I, I have no other saying, um, it's up to the board what you want to do, how you want to work with this, you want Mister Mesmer to come back with. With drawings showing what it's going to look like. Do you want to see, uh, have Mister Mesmer show you pictures? Of what the actual house looks like, that's. That's totally up to him and, and the board.
So, if, if, if I were to rely on your experience and I hold, I very genuinely. Do. Um, it almost sounds as if. It's got. These boxes checked that. In your experience, say. It's going to result in, whether it is used for this or not, it is all but the same. If those. Items were removed or could be. I, I know it sounds crazy, but taken out, is that allay your concerns that? If they're not there, then this can't be. Even if. Potentially or. Um, a second dwelling unless. They're again reinstalled, so for example, the washer dryer hookup. You know, he's said on to, at during this public hearing. That that's not his intention, that they just said, well, you might as well put it in while we're here and the, the wall is exposed, I understand that. The Mesmers might say, we're never going to use it, but. All due respect, they may not own the property in seventy five years and the next party that comes in and says, hey, there's a washer dryer hook up in this wall. Let's throw a washer dryer in now, so this is kind of the way. I think. Prospectively. A building inspector has to think because. What one party does is. You know, their business and, but that's, that were, you know, the potential is there, so again, Jerry, is there something? That more than just coming back with drawings? Could eliminate. Which we would have welcomed and appreciate, but could eliminate. Your concerns or your. Um, not even concerns, your beliefs and. Findings that this is. With these things in place, this is. A second dwell, this is. All but once completed a second dwelling. Can you take stuff out?
Yeah, you sure can. You can, you can take out the washer, you can take out the washer, washer. Um, hook up and you can just basically cap that off, um, just cut the pipes and cap it off. Um, I, I don't have any issue with that. Um. But it, it, you need, and. Mister Mesmer, you, do you plan on bringing in a refrigerator and a stove? In this, in this space?
No, there, there is a refrigerator. But there isn't a stove.
There isn't a stove and you don't plan cook, you don't plan on cooking there?
No. We don't, we're not preparing meals there.
So, so those, so, so those are things that we look into as well. Um, but once again, I, I wouldn't issue the permit because it's. What, what it basically appeared to me.
Yeah, so Mister Mesmer, your thoughts on this, so in other words, I mean, unless, and please, somebody tell me if I'm not reading this right. There's certain things that are in place that. Have given the building inspector on behalf of the town concerns that this is going to be. Or could be used for purposes of a second dwelling. And. We have a. On behalf of the community have an inch, he has an interest as well as this board in maintaining. You know. Um. Properly. Constructed and used property, so. If these things were to be taken out. Um, and you. You seem to be. Agree, uh, are you agreeable to that, or, you know, is there a way that we can? Find a common ground between. Your interests and those of the town in order to. Keep your project moving forward.
I would be happy to, uh, make whatever, uh. Arrangements are necessary to. Uh, do, do what's needed to be done, I guess, you know, um, yeah, that. Be happy to take out that laundry, uh, it really had no intention of using it, uh. It, right now, there's. There's been cabinets that have been put in front of it, so those cabinets are filled with paint. That, that's what that space. Is. Is, uh. A place where we.
Sure, but, so just so I'm under.
It's part of the shop, basically.
Sure, but, but again, the idea here is, is that. While that's in front of the wall now, it's what's behind the wall that concerns the building inspector and inherently the town. So. You know, taking that, that. Electrical lead out or that plumbing out or capping it, you know, that eliminates. The. Possible use or the potential use, which. You. Are. You, and. And if in the futures. Bylaws change or something changes or whatever the. Might be the case, the next party that could possibly own this property, it, you know, they would have to go through the effort. So I'm just trying to, and. Be clear, Inspector Noel is right, it's not his job to tell. People what they should do, but. What you, I believe, are. What I'm trying to impress upon everybody is, is that. He can tell you what. He sees that leads him to conclusions that have. Prevented him from allowing the permit. And if those things aren't in place. Then it sound, it seems to me that he might be. You know. Then his job would be fulfilled and he'd be able to allow it, it might. Jerry, if I'm correct in that, please let me know.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so. And we obviously want to see this project completed, I mean, you're putting a lot of time and effort and resources into it. So, um. I'm, I'm wondering if. In the board, please. Michelle and Brendan. Uh, you think it might be a situation where? We afford them the opportunity to. Revisit what's been done, what needs to be. Done, whether that's. Put this in or take this out. And, um. Reapproach in order to get this thing back on track and if it can't, then. We will have to decide at that time.
Yeah, I agree, I mean, if it's. If it's truly a, a shop sink, um. As I now know how that phrase is used, then I think you can make modifications to the plumbing and I think we would then be satisfied, so I, yeah, I think giving an opportunity to make the changes necessary. Such that pre- next owners can't just immediately flip it back into a full kitchen.
Brendan?
Yeah, I think what we basically have here is, we, we're, we're trying to uphold. Or, um, you know. Uh, Jerry's opinion here that this is a secondary dwelling unit, which. I tend to believe based on everything I'm seeing here, there's plumbing for a kitchen, there's plumbing for. You know, two bathrooms, a slop sink, a washer and dryer, whether or not you intend to. Use that all for its purpose, Mister Mesmer. If someone else moves into this property afterwards and. If someone else moves into this property afterwards and we um grant you this, they certainly. Can, and now we have a secondary dwelling on a um, you know, single family lot. Um. That being. Said, I'm okay with. Um, you know, if you're removing the washer and dryer hookup, removing the plumbing for the for the kitchen and then. Um, you know, essentially you. You have just an auxiliary um structure. That. Doesn't fit into that characterization as a um second second dwelling. Um, and with that, Jerry, would he still need a? Uh, secondary septic for that, I would assume so, but that would be the determination of the Board of Health at that point.
Yeah, that would be determined by the Board of Health, the 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 current plans that were submitted were approved by. Shelley, the plans reviewer, but they have yet to be approved by the Board of Health, which is what I'm raising. I spoke with him about this matter um earlier this morning.
Gotcha, and then um. Uh, Bob, maybe Kathy, if we did. Allow this, I mean, could we allow it with the stipulation that it is? Not to be. Used now or in the future as a. Uh, secondary or auxiliary dwelling unit?
Uh, that one, I. That's an interesting question, I had that same thought when I was.
No, without.
I I don't think we can illegally do that, I don't think.
I don't think.
Telling him we can't, reason being is because of if laws change, you can't.
Well, yeah, without without uh, you know. Uh, additional approvals if the laws were to change. But I don't.
Be concerned, we're just setting us up for an enforcement problem, um, you know.
Okay.
My my recommendation is. This that. Um, you know, I noted, I I'll take note that in in the the notice of um. A violation or the the um, I forget what, I apologize, Jerry, what you phrase the um. Notice that was given, um, permit denial, thank you. Uh, that you made note of. The bylaws and the and the statutes, et cetera. But it seems as if. It's the almost, there's there seemingly is a bit of a. A punch list. That. You know, a developer or can uh or contractor would use in order to. To put things in. If is it possible for you to say? Give them a specific. List, whether it's the three or four items that if these things aren't here, then. This is not going to be, I can't, no, no building inspector, we consider this. To be. Either actually or possibly. A sec uh a dwelling. And. That they could work from in order to remove cap. Um, those items and then. You know, allow for a second inspection for purposes of permitting. For whatever the use. Going forward, uh, the the construction going forward would be, so. Is that something that your office can do?
Yes.
Okay, and Mister Mesmer, is that? Um. Is that, does that seem like a a productive and um? Um. Positive um use of uh. For your project to continue?
Uh, sure, yeah, I get whatever, whatever it takes, I guess.
Okay, um. That being the case, um, what? What kind of a time, so I'm correct me if I'm wrong, nothing's going on at the at the at the site now, it's just basically. There's no activity, no further. Work being done by contractors, it's all being done by you or just.
Yeah, we're.
Mister Mesmer.
Do it yourselfers, uh, we're just trying to follow. The headlines and and involve the building department and trying to do it the right way, uh, hiring a professional plumber to do that work and. Uh, yeah, I guess everything is sort of stalled at the moment, uh, there's really nothing going on um until.
So how much, what what's a practical amount of time for? Our office, the building inspector's office to give you. You know, again, a list of the items that. He has noted that. In effect, would either have to be removed or altered or. Or otherwise. So that. You know. Those efforts could be made so that. You know, when we return to this, whether it's. It's ideally in September, is it all possible to be able to move this thing forward, if only for purposes of. Get making it. Not. Up here, not have the potential of being a second dwelling. Fighting to find friends.
Uh, yeah.
Is that enough time?
I think so.
You, Jerry?
Yes, plenty of time.
Okay, great, um. To the board, um, without going, closing the public hearing, my suggestion at this time is that we continue this to September. Our September, um, is it the fifteenth, I apologize, I closed my calendar. Um, the purpose, excuse me, September twelfth at that time. With the understanding that um. The. Building inspector will be. Finding the time and the courtesy to provide Mister Mesmer with. The list of things that led him to deny. The permit. And. If those things are taken care of timely. Uh, and he has the opportunity to inspect the property again. Um. Then I would assume that the appeal would be. Would be of no need. Uh, your thoughts, Michelle, Brendan?
Well, are are we actually denying a? Permit or just um upholding a cease and. Desist, is there an actual? Current permit on here, Jerry, or is in the process of amending it and applying for a new one?
He has, he has an application, um, and. The application is a little bit of work as well. Um, he's gonna, so he's gonna have to amend that application that he has, um. And I think what is what um. Chairperson Marine is saying is is um. Basically holding this for status, I guess, for the. The twelfth, September twelfth, and at that point in time, it'll be status and also assume.
Gotcha. And I'm. That's fine, I'm just trying to find a practical way of getting. Not to get around the denial, but to. Remove the items that. Would lead to it having been imposed. Especially since it from the conversation tonight, I've been led to believe that Mister Mesmer. Um, is. I. Um, has no plan to use. The noted. Observations by the building inspector for for the purposes that led him. To believe it was a um, it presents the potential of being a second dwelling.
Yes, I I might just be getting hung up on the words here, Bob, but I mean, e- essentially. The approval or denial is upholding the commissioner's decision that the accessory garage. Is or will be used as a additional living space. So if we were to vote to uphold. That it. Does or does not prevent him from moving forward? With a permit to just utilize this space. As a. Um, accessory unit with a, you know, with a slop sink and a couple of bathrooms.
Well. With my. Recommendation. The. Cooperation between the the town and the. Uh, and the Mesmers. Would avoid. There being. A future. Permit problem because they would. Basically take out anything that that's a problem now as well as more. Clearly have an idea of what. Can or will go in. So. So that we don't have to revisit. Possibly revisit a to uh another denial, permit denial. So it's more of a practical approach. That I'm suggesting. And putting it over for status would. Allow. In this case, um. Effectively, maybe just Mister Noel, Inspector Noel appearing to say that it's been resolved and. Um. Uh. Effectively, it all but upholds what he's doing without the imposition of the denial and it allows the permitting to proceed. But again, he, as Jerry just acknowledged, there's some other things that have to be tightened up. Overall on the project, which. I don't think it's unusual with any. In many situations. Right, uh, correct, Jerry?
That is correct.
It's not, it's not the first time where someone has to come back and amend their. Their plan or their project to get it in compliance.
Correct.
You know, for whatever purpose, so I'm suggesting that. In the board that we put this over for status for that reason. For September eighth. And. Could be continuation of the of the hearing or for status only, um, I think it's all but the same.
I'm fine.
With the understanding that it's going to be something more clearly and um, I mean with with that. Because it will come from. Quite frankly, the building inspector's office, if they've. Taken care of the items that are on. On his list or on our list that we want addressed.
Yeah, status on September twelve, sounds good to me.
For the record, I hate putting things over, but I don't, I don't want to, um, I want to see the project continue because I I take Mister Mesmer. At his representation that he's invested a lot of time, trouble and activity in this, and I'd like to see that um. The work continue. But also without any risk of. Um, permit problems, whether it's in the immediate or down the road. So um. Uh. I'd like to move that we put this matter over for status. Um, for. Uh, September twelfth. Affording the uh building inspector's office the opportunity to. Alert uh more to list and alert. Um, the parties at it, um. One ninety-two, excuse me. Um. April. Of um. What needs to be addressed in order to um. Uh. Lay concerns that this would be a second dwelling. Uh.
Seconded.
I. Thank you. Uh, all in favor of putting it over for those purposes?
Brendan Riley, I.
Shaw, Bodie and I.
Barbara and I, so thank you, and thank you, Inspector Noel, so Mister Mesmer effectively, um. I know it's the end of the week. And we're but well before the holiday, um, if you could reach out to um, uh, Miss Noel's office. And, you know. Give him whatever. If there are going to be additional drawings or whatever, but he has um, with courtesy agreed to let you know what needs to be effectively. Changed within the within that within your bond now so that uh. Um. It doesn't. Show the potential for being a second dwelling. And if we take you as you seem to have stated tonight, you know, we appreciate that. Um, these things aren't objectionable to you. Uh, I have every confidence that. When you return or if the matter is when we revisit it. In September for status. Um, we should be able to determine whether or not there's any reason to go forward with considering. An outright denial of the permit in the in a court and uphold the um. Building inspector's findings. Uh, is that understandable and agreeable?
Yes.
Okay, great, I appreciate that, so we'll put the matter over again for status. Um. September uh twelve. And um. Uh. And Kathy, if you could make a note to put that. Um. At at the initial, at the very first item on for September twelve. With our agenda.
Well.
Okay, thank you, all right, Mister Mesmer, good luck with um, good luck with the uh, any changes and um. Adjustments that have to be made, thank you, Jerry, for um, your input and your uh. Your um courtesy and now trying to keep this thing. Going forward. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Um, final ma- final matter on tonight's agenda for um. Uh, sorry, August eighth, uh. Matter was put over on an appeal of the business commissioner. Regarding forty Elm Street, uh, it's on for status only this evening. Uh. Sorry. And this is regarding a matter that was put before the board. Um, specifically. Uh, July eleventh. Uh, and thereafter, petition of Joseph uh T. Keys, representing counsel to um, um. Alvin Hin Wong, one of. Under and twelve, one hundred and twelve Bolton Road in Harvard for variance from the West Side Lot. Line for a stone wall at forty Elm Street, map seventy-eight parcel fifty-seven North Reading Mavs for the setback. Requirements of the dimensional and density regulations of the North Reading zoning bylaws, good evening. Um. Uh, are we uh on behalf, uh, for the matter of regarding forty Elm, um, who is in attendance this evening?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, it's Joseph Keys on behalf of the petitioner of.
Great, thank you, counsel, good evening, um. What what can you tell us about uh the activity at um?
Yeah.
Forty Elm, I think we were trying to figure out, uh, I know you're going to have conversations with uh the neighboring. Uh. Property owners in particular, as well as other items.
That that's correct, we we've been unable to meet with the neighbors just yet, we've been trying to uh to to get them uh. In that they have a busy schedule, which I can appreciate, um, but we're still trying to meet with them. Uh, in the meantime. Um. We've relooked, we we reviewed the plans, um, we're going to be able to pull the wall away from the property line. Uh, an additional three feet. Um, and we have the engineer working on those plans now. Um, ultimately, what I'd like to do is get that plan. Sit down with the neighbors, get some level of comfort with the neighbor neighbor. If we can, and then uh come into your September twelfth meeting. Uh, with an agreement in place with the neighbors and uh. Be able to to get you guys to render an decision, a decision on the twelfth. Uh, by pulling that wall in three feet, I think that would take care of uh. I believe one of the the members had a concern about maybe an easement or something along those lines. Uh, for wall maintenance, um, but I think pulling it back. Uh, the three feet, I don't think we're going to need to worry about that, we'll have plenty of room to do whatever kind of maintenance you need to do on a on a concrete or a field stone wall. Um. But that's pretty much where we're at, we're we're looking to get uh. Like I said, a a better plan that I can, I can get to Kathy once I get it and review it. And uh, we still need to make time to uh sit down with the neighbors if they're willing still.
Okay, thank you for that, um. You know. Referring back to the um violation notice of May twentieth, second paragraph. Um, Inspector Noel at that time noted that to correct this violation, and just for the record. You must provide proof in the form of a civil engineer stamped plan showing. That the structure at the front. West side of your property is more than ten feet. From the side lot and twenty feet from the front lot line, if the structure is not in compliance, you must remove forthwith. Additionally, if the structure is complying, you must submit. A building permit in accordance. Uh, with zoning bylaw two hundred death seventeen, the reason I'm pointing that out is is that. You know, there's still the question of, you know, the you, I mean. Again, my read on this. One. One man's wall is not another, is one, one man's wall. Stone wall is another man's retaining wall, so what I mean by that is is that the wall was constructed, but on the property line for all intensive purposes. Not as a wall that had been maybe there before, a stone wall. But was effectively. But was effectively a retaining wall, actually, if not effectively, actually a retaining wall. But there's still the the. You know, the location of it now. I understand, and this is a status only, so I'm just trying to alert you to my underlying concern here, which is. You know, three feet is better than. On the plot plot low property line. And while we do. Um. You know, the agreement of a a neighbor or an abiding neighbor, but there's still the need to get. Um. Very setback. And. You know. I I'm interested in. Finding out if. You know, the whole nature of the project is. Is, you know, the location of all of these items. I know you're always, we're all confined by the property lines for any purpose. But at the same time, um. You know, I'll be. That's going to be, and still is, um, in in my. Consideration on this matter, the the more important. Aspect of it, notwithstanding the neighbors' objections, which. I. Read, I can understand and, you know. Um, sympathize with because their interest of their property, as is. Your client's interest of his property, so. Um. So before, while. In your request to put this over for further status. Um. I just wanted to. Bring that. Point out. As you go forward with the planning and adjustments to the. The plan that is. Obviously going to be. Uh, changed amended. Updated um. And that's, I think you should just take that. As it is, Michelle and or Brendan. Uh, any thoughts on? Again. In the in the immediate, the request to continue this for status. And anything else that. You might have given consideration to during the pendency since our last meeting on this matter.
Yeah, no, no issues continuing over for further status, but I echo what Bob said, just. Really take another look at that drawing, three feet is still. You know, very, very close. If if you can come back with five or seven, that would be better than three.
Well, it would be four. It's a foot now, and it would be four, just to be clear. And I'm sorry if I didn't make that clear earlier. And Mister Chairman, I I I. I I I don't understand your point. If you don't mind either repeating it, I mean, I I I I have the violation notice on my hand.
So, you know, you know, he he. Sure, he made the point that, you know, to remedy where the the retaining, this is effectively going to be a retaining wall.
That's correct.
And. It's still. You know. The bylaws establish. The distance from. The property lines. Where a retaining wall should be located. And your four feet is still short of the bylaws, so at some point.
That's why we're here to ask for relief.
You know. Understood, but. So. You know, the hardship that has to be expressed, which you probably, I. Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, I have a very, a. A certain under memory that. The property, just as everything is set up and where everything can. Lay. Um, this might be the only area that you might be able to locate that, so that's fine. And again, um, so very much of this is. Um, you know, obviously the notation, the finding of viol- of the um. The violation by the inspector, but also, you know, the sincere. Expression of concern by the neighbor, and I know you're trying to address that. Um. I just want to. Impress upon you as I would anybody. The the closest. The the more in line with the bylaws that you can possibly get, make. Me more. Agreeable to. Um, granting. A um. Uh. Granting a request for a um. For uh, relief uh, from the bylaws. I'm just. I mean that I'm not binding you to that, but again. You know. Yes, better than being on the property line or a foot there from four feet is better than. One foot. Um, one foot's better than no feet, but you know, there's still. I I have every confidence that your engineer will. Make every effort to lie within the um. The uh, the bylaws or whatever the property situation can. Can afford. But it's just that's. As much as the neighbor's input is important in this matter. Their voice is just for their concerns. This board has to look at it as. A project that is going to exist within. This community in this town.
Okay.
And. That. That drives, I think. So very much of what. I consider in all of these matters. So again, that's just me and.
I I I I understand where you're driving at now. I thank you, thank you.
Appreciate that. Um. Michelle, thank you. Uh, Brendan, any thoughts or or remarks that, you know? Uh, with regard to the putting it over for status and or. Um, any thoughts you might have had since the last?
No, I'm fine with putting it over for uh, you know, for status, providing they come back to us with a detailed structural drawing. Um, just curious, do we have? I know the neighbors are very vocal. Uh, last meeting. Are they on the call this evening?
They're on the video now.
Right, because I'm seeing, uh, thank you, there's. Um. Julie Dale and Alvin W. Geraldine Dale, the Dales.
This is Julie Dale, um.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you? Um, I can't speak on this matter. My my mom Geraldine Dale is on the call, um, probably experiencing. Technical difficulties. Um, I grew up on the property and. Until I can um. See what's going on with on her end, I can try to speak for her if you want me to.
Well, I think the more per um, immediate question is is um. Is. The opportunity. So time is always a consideration, so. It'd go over, there's no activity on the property that I can see as I drive by it, or maybe you can tell me differently, or they can. But it's kind of in limbo for all, for lack of a better phrase. Um, do you think they'll have opportunity to meet with? Um. The developer, or in this case Attorney Keys. Before. Um. September twelve. And. You know. There's an an interest on their part, obviously, but. You know. When you're developing any property and trying to finish a project. We always have to keep in mind the time of year, so. Pushing this along and and not getting it moved is a problem.
Um, forgive me, guys. Um, so I have Geraldine on my phone. Um, so she can speak clearly into the meeting. Um, you want to go ahead, Mom?
Yeah, I'm on, I can't unmute for some reason. I don't know why.
Can you hear her okay?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Mom.
I I don't know why I'm on. Mute, I can't unmute my um, computer for some reason. Um. But we do still have concerns. About the wall even being four feet. To our property. Um. Having a wall, I don't know what height it has to be still, but. Having a wall seven feet high, four feet from our property. Affects the value of our home, holding back a septic system. Um, so we would like it in the bylaws. I mean. It's just going to affect the value of our property, even if we want seven years from now. Trying to sell a house.
Well.
Wall holding back a septic system, three feet, three or four feet away from your home is not a selling point. It's. It's just um. Not something we want.
Right, so. Um, for practical, for practical purposes, this was put over for status, uh, Mister and Mrs. Dale and Julie, as the case is. Um. Do you, do you believe you'll have opportunity to? Discuss and talk with. Attorney Keys and or uh, any of the team that is involved in the project at um. At uh, forty Elm before. Earned uh, worthwhile conversations, I guess. Uh, in advance, in time for our. September twelfth meeting. And again, the matter is only off of status tonight. I was only pointing out that I want to make sure that. Um, you know, since the last time we met, it's it's the opportunity.
With all due respect, um. It it really isn't their problem. Um, I think what they're just looking for is for the retaining wall to be within the ten feet of the property line. Um. If that can't, if that can't happen.
Discuss with the lawyer, we just would like it within the bylaws. Um. We just want it right.
Do you think um, the contractor can do their their best to get this within the bylaws? And then. You know, if that really cannot happen, it can come back. Um. You know, I just. It it really isn't their problem. They just live next to a contractor trying to to get around the rules right now.
Um. Noted for the record, um, all um. And that's what the com- that's why um, we afforded the parties the opportunity to talk this out and see where they're at with not only for purposes of. Hopeful resolution, but in that. A better understanding of the design possibilities and or complications that fall from that. Um, so. To the Dales. And Attorney Keys. Um. Is September twelfth. As a. Continued status date. A further status date, excuse me, um. Opportune time for you to have. Conversation about this. And for. Everybody to understand what. Might. Possibly be able to be agreed to in order to. At least to lay your concerns.
Well, I I just just to back up a little because, I mean, it it sounds like Mrs. Dale is not interested in having. Any conversation short of us conforming. To the setback requirements. We're here for the board to seek relief from those setback requirements because we do have a hardship. And we cannot locate the septic system in any other spot. Um, we want to be sensitive to their needs. We want this wall to look like. The best possible product for them. Um, you know, or I will sit down with my client and we'll sit down with the engineer. And see if we can't squeeze out more than four feet. I I I I don't know. I I don't have that answer for anybody tonight. Um, but. You know, I I don't know how fruitful. Uh, a conversation with the neighbors is going to be. Uh, we're at a standstill with this project right now where. This is the next step we need to take, and we can't, to your point, Mister Chairman, we can't. Get this project back up off the ground without getting this issue. Squared away, and I appreciate you stating that, you know, this is a, you know, a timeline issue. Um. But I'm 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 certainly happy to sit down with our engineers and and and, you know, work out the best possible, you know. Final, this is, this is as much as we can do on this, but we do need some kind of relief on long that lot line. Um, due to the hardship and the location and the wetlands. Um, it's why we're here. Um, so, um, again, happy to sit down. I mean, I'd love to get their emails. I can share with them the new drawings. Um, you know, other than having uh, Mister Dale's phone number, I don't have any other contact information. If they're willing to leave that with Kathy. I'm happy to get a hold of them. I'm happy to meet with them after hours. I'm happy to meet with them on the weekend. Um. Whatever they want to do. Um, but. Listening to their input, it doesn't sound like. Um, that they want to have that conversation. If I'm wrong, please feel free to correct me. I'm not trying to cast dispersions on anybody, but um. You know, happy to talk about it.
Yeah, and I guess I I would I would echo that. I thought I thought we had put this over for status. Because Mister Mrs. Dale were willing to have a conversation, and we don't need to force that conversation, but if. If things have changed or upon reflection, you're not interested in that conversation, I think, then the next scheduled. Meeting, we we then pick back up the agenda item and, you know, render our decision.
And I think it's a fair. Point to make that uh, there are going to be changes to the plan. So. The input. Whether it's. You know. This. Input could be input, input could be provided by not only the neighbors, but the town. That. Doesn't have to be, there's no reason to be seen as an endorsement of the project. Or the changes that have to be made. So. I just want to be sure that when. We re- revisit this. In September. We go, when we go back to public hearing on this, which is what it sounds like. Uh, it'll be put over for. Uh, for September twelfth. Um. The parties. Have had a chance to review. Uh, see what. The Dales would have a chance to see what is going to happen at. Forty Elm and obviously. Uh, the town are in our board. Uh. Those same drawings and or. Reconsiderations or. New proposals are understood so that. Everybody has a very clear idea of um. Of what. They need to be done. Relief. In these situations. Um. Are often. With agreement and. Uh, in some cases, they're not. Uh, I just, let's refer to the prior uh, situation where. You know, things might end up being, having to be removed that were already put in. It's just how. You know. You try to resolve matters, but again, to the Dales and to Julie Dale, their daughter. Um, your conversations are no way. To be this. Um, seen as any kind of endorsement of the changes. We're just. I trying to give everybody an opportunity to understand. What's being done as this matter. Goes forward, so. Uh, all that being noted, um, I'd like to move that the matter be. Continued to. Uh, September twelfth. For public hearing, resume resumption of public hearing and not for status only, as was the case with tonight. Uh, with the understanding that at that time. Um, whatever information might be developed in the interim we introduced. Thoughts from the board.
Yeah, I agree. I second that emotion.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, all in favor of putting the matter over to uh. To resume um. Public hearing. On uh. Thursday, September twelfth. Can I get? Uh, all in favor?
Brendan Riley, I.
Michelle Bodie and I.
Barbara and I, so uh, to the Dales and Attorney Keys, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, for being with us tonight. And again, uh, the matter is going to be. On for September twelfth. If for some reason, in particular, the Dales are unavailable, please let us know. Um. Uh, obviously, being the direct neighbor is always important that your input is heard from, but again. Uh, and to their daughter and to Attorney Keys. Um. The view of all of this is not only behalf of just the neighbors, but the entire North Reading community, and that's how. That's our obligation as um, zoning board of appeals for these purposes. Uh, and I'd like to believe we do take everything into consideration, not only in the immediate, but in the future. Whether it's development of a barn. Or um, living purposes or recreation or activity. As well as um. Development of a property for sale, make that on the community for future sale and value. All of these things have to be considered, like to believe and. Urge everybody to believe that we're taking all of these matters into consideration in those lights, so thank you. Uh, so Kath, if you could put this on for uh, September twelfth and. Um. Uh, I can't speak to a particular placement on the um, agenda, but um. Uh. I think it that determination will be based to. I think it, that determination will be based upon whatever information we get from now until. Uh, the agenda is finalized for September. Um, twelfth, so thank you all.
Mister Chairman, can I just one quick question?
Yes, please. Go right ahead.
If I could get an email for the Dale's so that I could share with them any engineering plans that we have. Um, I'll obviously send them the Kathy before the meeting, if she can circulate them ahead of time, and you guys can take a look. Before the next meeting, happy to do so, but I, I just. Just so we're not walking into the next meeting and they don't have any prior notice of what we're doing. I'd love to be able to share everything with them.
Sure, um, Mr. and Mrs. Deal, Julie. Can that be accomplished without any kind of?
I mean, they can give, they can give it to Kathy and I can call Kathy.
Yeah. Obviously, uh, privacy matters. Um, and the deal is still with us.
Uh, yeah, we're still here. I'm going to put her on speakerphone for you.
Okay, so, um, for practical purposes, Attorney Keys and effectively forty Elm, just want to be able to, um. Provide you with the information, and again, um, I'd encourage you guys to talk, um, but as I said. Moment ago. Conversation, negotiation, uh, conversation, whatever, is no endorsement of the project. It's just input and. They have your concerns, so they're not surprised. When they hear them, uh, when we continue the progress, and they'll have every chance to give you and show you whatever they believe. Can be done, you take it and process it and.
Excuse me, uh.
Right. Yes.
Um, sorry to interrupt, um, Geraldine is on speakerphone and did want a chance to talk, uh, to answer your, your question. Or to answer, um, where Keith's question.
Sure, um, just in the moment, go right ahead.
Uh, I will call Kathy and provide her with an email address.
Excellent.
If I could also provide Kathy with some photos, we have maybe to show the board. What the, um, offered zone looked like before, like what the land looked like before was all torn up.
That would be great.
Okay.
I'd point out that, uh, Kat, the town hall's availability on Fridays is, um, we're still, they, they have half day policy, so. If, um, Mrs. Pay, uh, sorry, Mrs. Deal could reach out, uh, the beginning of next week, I think that's the more. Efficient and, uh, probably. The best time to, um, get that information over to our, to her office. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, great. So again, Kathy, if you could put this on for, um. Uh, resumption of the public hearing for, um, on our, uh, September, uh, twelfth agenda. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, um, thank you to all the parties regarding forty Elm. Um, thank you for your patience with this evening. Have a good evening, um, good luck and yourself, you say, thank you.
Thank you.
So. Without any new business and. I didn't take note, or we're, are we bringing forward any minutes from prior meetings?
Yes, I think.
Oh, minutes, uh, yeah, the minutes from, um, from July twenty. Sorry, twenty fifth. I did, was, had a conversation and have a quick chance to review them as anybody. Who was involved in those hearings and those matters. I know we, um. The per, the, the matters were, um. Approved by. Board members earlier today, they went around for, um, signing, uh. Endorsement, so I, I'm assuming that's okay, but, uh, does anybody want to bring a motion with regard to our minutes? From, uh, July twenty fifth.
They look good to me, so make a motion to adopt.
Uh, can I get a second?
Hi, Brendan Riley, second.
All in favor?
Michelle Bodie and I.
Brendan Riley, I.
Barbara and I, thank you, board. Apologies for the length of this, um. None of this should come as any surprise. I just think it's, you know, assumptions are made. And, uh, Jerry, thank you for, uh, your courtesy and also for pointing out. I think people don't understand sometimes the role any of us have in these matters. But the building inspector may be more so than any. So with regard to, um. Haverell, was it? Your work with them, I think will be able, will be. Efficient and proficient, so thank you for any help you can give to those people. This idea of not only having contractors, but doing the work yourself is kind of a mixed bag. And sometimes those results. Giving them the benefit of the doubt can be. Result in a mixed bag. Actually, if not literally, so thank you for, um. What will be an odd punch list in that. Be taking things out as opposed to putting things in, I, I, I can't. I can't tell you how funny I find that sometime. But. All right, um, thank you, Michelle. I'll take that cue. All in favor of, um, do I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, all in favor. Thank you, all in favor, say aye.
Brendan Riley, I.
And I, Brendan, I, thank you. The very nice end of your August, a very safe and relaxing Labor Day. Thank you all, and thank you Kathy.
Sorry, one more thing before, just can we make a plan to talk to people who had submitted an application for the board? I just, if Maria's having scheduling issues, I know I've been a little inconsistent, like I, I think we should bring on an alternate or two. Um.
Yes.
Associate members, not alternates, um, so Kathy, is it possible to get the latest version of who? I know some of those were like eight months old, nine months old. I don't, I don't know if their interest expires or if they've already gone on to other boards, but can you please recirculate and then maybe? Um, I'm happy to take the lead and just call them all and see if they're still interested, just to move this forward, because I don't, I don't want there to be quorum issues.
I can send you a, um, list again.
Yeah. Bob, are you okay if I take first crack and just reach out to them?
Bob, are you hearing her?
What was that? I'm sorry.
Do you mind if I just take a first crack and reach out to everyone on the list?
Sure.
Interested?
That's fine. Kathy, ultimately. What's the, are they looking for us to say yes or no? That being maybe the board?
Um, I think they're looking for you to, um, call these people, have a conversation. And then recommend people to be liaised onto the board.
Okay, so they want us to bed. Um, all right, fair enough. That's fine. Um, tell you what, if you, I know you're, you'll be back in on Monday. If you can just send out the list to all three of us. And at the time you guys receive it, just pick a name or, you know, whatever you, and we'll just go from there. And we'll try to facilitate.
Excuse me, I, I just want to speak to Kathy here for a second. Kathy had a, a death in her family, so. And she's basically reaching out tonight. She shouldn't have even been here, um, and I, I thank her for being here. And, uh, um, she's not going to be in Friday, and she won't be in Monday.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, thank you. Jerry, Kathy, what are you doing? And why are you here? I'm so sorry.
Well, I couldn't, um, it was, um, early in the week, so I couldn't postpone.
Oh, sorry, our hearts go out to you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
Yeah, my mother-in-law passed away earlier in the week.
No.
All right.
At your availability and opportunity.
Yeah.
Thank you. And thank you, Jerry, and, um. Um, thank you all, um, please have a good rest of your evening and, um. A wonderful hall, uh, weekend and, um. We'll, uh, find, we'll process the information as it comes in from all of these matters. Thank you all.